Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call the meeting in order. Mr. Anna, can you confirm we have a floor, sir?
Yes, sir, we have a full floor.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, you have an agenda that was previously distributed. You have the floor for a motion.
Like a motion where it's up in the categories.
Motion and second. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Both signed to this. Thank you. This time next up on the agenda is the public hearing for the 2026 budget. I will open this public hearing and I will turn this over to Chair Mr. Douglas.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, and for the public. Just wanted to provide a little bit of a wrap back around and then I'll turn it over to Lindsay. We're going to kind of do a be Lindsay Kim tonight on the totality of the budget. But just to kind of, you know, for everyone's benefit, the 2026 budget began, the process began at the staff level to end of June. So finance distributed to different departments their budgets and asked them to submit back their requests to finance by the end of July. So then in mid-August, city management met with each of the department heads, kind of walked through a lot of their requests, went ahead and said, this is what we think that the budget is going to look like from a balanced perspective. Then in August 28th work session, there was direction provided to advertise for the military rate. And of course, the reason why the military is important to break up is it is about 30% of the revenue needed for the general fund operation. So then October 6th, we had our first and second military hearings. October 9th, that following Thursday, we did have a pretty lengthy budget work session where we went through the department requests along with the city manager recommendations based upon trying to get to a balanced approach. And then on October 23rd, we had the third and final public hearing and the subsequent approval of the military rate, which was passed eventually to roll back the military rate. November 13th, last Thursday, we did provide you all with a draft copy of this budget that we're going to walk through in just a moment. And it's in the lobby and on our website for the public. And tonight is our advertised public hearing. So again, Mr. Mayor, counsel, this is an opportunity that we've got to walk through all these different public meetings. Tonight, we're going to kind of capture a little bit of the synopsis of the budget. But being a public hearing, it is time for the public to be heard, so we're going to try to speak less, listen more. And with that, we do hope that at our regular meeting on December 1, that we can ask all considerations without the 2026 budget. So I will turn it over to Lindsay, kind of kick us off.
Thank you for bringing it in, Mayor and counsel. We'll spare you all the details of going line by line on this, but we don't have time to be here all night. So we're just going to touch on a couple of the highlights, Brandon will be chiming in as well. So Brandon has pulled up our revenue. So there's approximately 60 different revenue lines that must be monitored and estimated while creating and managing the general fund budget. So where does the general fund revenue come from? 34% represents real and personal property tax. So military, that's what it comes down to, is your real and personal property. 51% is derived from our other local taxes, which that includes our TAVT when you buy a vehicle, you pay your TAV tax, franchise tax, which cable, electric, phone, alcohol distribution tax, and financial institution tax, and of course occupational tax. So that's made up of those taxes. Our planning and development department fees, they contribute to about 3% of our revenue. Alcohol license grants, donations, and messellians fees all derive around 1% each of the revenue, and a transfer from our municipal grant plus the 4% of the revenue. This year, even though we have increased some of our revenues, we're still looking at a use of $360,924 from our current balance. So we were hoping that would be a little bit smaller, but they happen. Some things that people don't realize with some of our expenditures that take away from our revenue is in the general funds, 33% of our expenditures comes from personal benefits alone. So we divest our employees and we like to provide them good benefits. So that's one of our selling points. Something that mentioned that a lot of people don't realize, that it costs the city close to $200,000 to keep the streetlights on. So if you like having your streetlights on and being able to stop at red lights, then you're welcome, the city contributes those to those. Another point was our HR worked diligently to help reduce our health insurance increase from a 20% had increased to 10% this year. We do have a good benefit policy, health insurance policy for our employees. And our liability insurance did increase approximately 6% this year. And our workers' comp increased probably close to 36%, even though we try to minimize the number of claims or anything we have. And we are working to defer small equipment purchases, minimize any budgetary impacts. And we revised our uniforms to do it in-house versus a uniform company to help save some money. But overall, all of our departments are doing a good job by keeping expenditures to minimum with regard to our normal operations.
How was it?
So again, Lindsay kind of touched on the big ones. You can see from the actual budget itself that the revenue lines that you'll see momentarily reflect that after the rollback, we did look at reducing the hazard worn down. We did increase a little bit of the loss based upon some of the collections that were trending. And again, those are more contingent on consumables and other things. So those are your two more substantial sorts. We did increase the insurance premium tags based upon what we have received thus far this year. We did also look at, even though we do still have the suspension in place, there still are existing developments that have been kind of in the approval process since 21 that are starting to be vertical now. So we did, back in the way of where theirs have increased that up. So all told, with the use of current balance, we're about 8.266995. You may or may not remember that at the October 9th, we had looked at thinking that would be about 8.293. So we do have a difference of nearly 27,000 from the work session to this draft budget. So then, kind of flip over to start looking at some of our expenditures. And part of the expenditure section, at the ninth work session, we had looked at about 7.93. And this one, all told, is about 7.906 with the additional current balance, as Lindsay pointed out. The, you heard Lindsay talk about, the personnel is about 73%. Dan goes back and listens to what I said on the night, he's going to call me out and say, Brandon, you said 80%. And that is right, I didn't say 80%, Dan. Because all the city managers incorporate additional items versus standards. So I talked to Lindsay about it. So it's a matter of management philosophy. She's going to say 73 based upon some hard costs. I'm going to lump in professional services. There's other things that we really don't have discretion over, but it's not technically something that, you know, you can include, but you can't cut it either. So that's why I said 80%. Operational was around 17%. That's again, no capital outlays are in this budget. For legislative, the only change really is the increase in professional legal. The executive, again, this is the department that houses half of me, half of Kim, half of Lori, and the community engagement manager. Again, nothing groundbreaking in terms of just operational and no capital. And Jan, we do not have a planned 2026 election, so that is zero. Financial, this includes seven employees, six, excuse me, six employees, and that includes Lindsay and her team. Again, based upon the fact that we do provide for enterprise services, some monies are cost allocated over to enterprise plan. So the 124 as employees is a percentage of those six individuals. This also is where you look for some bottom of the lines. This is where we do have two partnerships for the library and the Keep Think Beautiful hackup. We had paid out of there, but you'll see in a moment another department that we expensed that out for the 2026. Municipal courts, we have one court in history. Again, there are certain requirements that we, as a municipality, we do have municipal courts, so this is where our judge, listener, and public defender are housed, along with required training, education, talent. So again, no capital outlay scheduled for that department. Police department, you may recall the night, we had discussed the department's request. Obviously, you can see that we still have your capital. There are 22 positions budgeted, 21 swan positions. That is up from 20. We did eliminate the part-time employee. We were able to utilize some of those savings and do the general fund to add one scorn officer we'll talk about momentarily. Then we'll get to fire department. This is the 19 position along with none part-time. And I did want to just go back briefly a little bit, starting with police. We'll touch on police and fire. Lindsay is the finance director. She does hold our chiefs and our directors accountable for work. They're overtime, but I will have to disclose during this public hearing that it is difficult for them to manage overtime due to the fact that there are things that you cannot control, whether it be additional shifts that are needed because of steeple, vacation, sickness, et cetera, inclement weather, events. So this is where you will start seeing that, yes, our contribution to a lot of the events, whether it's through this organization or this one, is our overtime. So what I try to extend is a little bit of grace, knowing that of these three departments, and we'll touch on police, fire, street, public works, they're hovering around that 80% thus far this year. Now, we still got the rest of November 27th, so it could be that they bust through their OT this year. And it's not to cause of mismanagement, it's merely the fault of the fact that you've got to have people, you've got to have them. And when you've already expensed out certain funds due to events, you can't just not show up when there's a tree down or when there's a inclement weather. So I told Lindsay I was going to say that, not to, I guess to let y'all know that she does own the cannibal. But if you see at December 1, the expenditure is in your packet. If you look sometime to the OT, the department ads get nervous because there's nothing they can do about it. And it looks like, well, I can't manage it. Based upon our size and based upon all the stuff we do, I always recognize that they're doing the best they can. So this sort of what we have done this year is we've done a good job with our fire department in terms of Chief Sharon operating with a lot of part-time. We do have nine part-time positions. I think full, I believe. We have a higher process going for one full-time position or if somebody retired after 23 years. So again, he's doing a good job. We've got Station 14 open, the mayor mentioned this week. We're talking about some stuff and, you know, you reminded some folks that we opened it with existing personnel. So it was not as though we had to incur additional operational expense beyond the fact that Lindsay has taken into account maybe some additional inconsequential type items such as electricity and other things to try to develop to this line. Again, no capital included. And the fire department, in animal control, this is where we had a one position that the person transferred to another department. This person was part code revulsion, part animal control. It's going to be my desire for us to continue conversations that have been done in 2020, 2021 era of looking at how is the scale of accounting department will dim. The chair and I briefly discussed it, but it doesn't warrant further conversations. So we did throw out plenty of lives with that anticipation. This is the public works, albeit it does say street department. This is where there are nine positions funded. And I believe Josh, you are full with those nine. Josh was able this year to work with Lori and HR to create kind of a classification of system of how we classify the team. That there's definitely about 110 folks because we utilized some of the sanitation. The two employees charged off to that enterprise to help supplement them through the public work station. So it has greatly assisted with us having all call out for events and storms. But again, no capital outlet projects. There had been some discussions about wanting to lose some side of room as to the building. So I think that he is going to be the director. Davis is going to go out there with paintbrush, he's very painting the building tomorrow at most likely. Just this. Yes, fine. Yes, and click very good. So if you start seeing some shy work on the exterior, you're host Josh. So I think I'm good. Link maintenance, this is the one position. We do charge off half of that salary to enterprise since they do work on city vehicles, police, fires, as well as some of our service trucks and enterprise and the sanitation. So then we get to the parks budget. There's no funding available for positions. Josh's team has done a good job this year as in parks and getting that to where I think they can all continue to be better, because they've done a great job. The capital included, these are just operational supplies that when the guys go and need something in the community and finance department, you know, what they purchased or what they did, this provides an area for finance to account for and charge off. And then get to protecting inspections. The way governmental accountants do it, I call it building inspections. This is protecting inspections. You may recall that we did not backfill this position. This year, 26, we are requesting to not fund that position, but just continuing to rely on very competent inspectors to handle that. And that's where some of the savings is at, because some of our others was embedded in that plan as well. So the essentially two positions and three different budgets did allow for us to use the part-time elimination of PD to audit and provide for managed officer that the plan is to hopefully supplement any calls for service for animal and or other people. Plan is only to address three individuals in this portion with the director, whatever, and planning the permanent tech. And again, the capital is included in this particular item. And DA, again, this is because DA is a component unit of the city. What does that mean is it means that their budget is essentially managed and accounted for through finance, the component of the city therefore. They're included in our budget approval process. Their revenue is derived through donations plus you'll see in a moment that the hotel motel funds. So again, if you were to go back to the revenue sheet, you'll see that there's two lines that Lindsay accounts for, donations plus hotel motel to add to proper revenue to then match against the expenses. So when they have certain events, we can account for that and just call it monitoring. And this is the one that Lindsay absolutely loves, and she loved it even more before Chief Sharon, Chief Dawkins, talked me off earlier this year about some handouts, because she had it basically to about $53,000 worth of debt. However, we do have to account for the first payment, five-year payment for the handouts that we purchased from Motola. Although the 2026 was approved by voters, we do have to anticipate that we do not have that money, that we will not have that money immediately. So the first payment is due, I believe it's June or July. So if in fact, in addition to the continuation of SPOSS, the voters need to vote for general obligation bond indebtedness if y'all so desire, that will be something we'll discuss December 1 meeting. So we cannot presuppose what y'all may or may not do. So we do have to account for this debt on our books. So that I think will kind of talk you a little bit about is the only real access to some capital fund that we have is through our SPOSS. And let me just touch on this hotel motel. So this is essentially in and out. So this is the $62,000 to the chamber, $2,400 to hackup. This 24, we got 25. Okay. I think Angela told y'all on the night, it was about 25, it was 24, so we changed to 25. And then the general fund, that is for to the, the 24 teams plus essentially zero of the past of 2026. And Kim can talk a little bit about as we finish up 2020.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and counsel. So you'll recall that when Brandon first came back to us, it was the allocation of our SPOSS dollars in 2020 to specific projects that we needed to finish out. And these were the projects that we had been originally told, you know, these are, these are the things that the voters have voted for, the things that we want to accomplish within this next SPOSS cycle. So Pearl Park is accounted in here. There will be additional work next year. They are anticipated to be finished, they are shooting for May, as long as the weather holds out. If anyone has been out there, there's been tremendous progress on that project. You will notice though, there is roughly in the middle, professional services, the sidewalks. And that is where we house that $330,000 that had been allocated for the 2024 tap grant. That is the one that is the 2.2 million that we received for new sidewalk along North Main Street in between Revolution Church down to basically where Mark Whitfield and North Main Street in, or Chamber Street, you could say that as well. When that project was bumped up, GDOT was kind enough to pull the additional matching amount that we needed from the Georgia Infrastructure Bank. And so they paid that additional matching for the city. And what we truly owe is about 290 as we get further into that project. This project has not started yet. 2024 has not had any meetings. We do not have a schedule for when they will be doing anything yet. I know that that project will start. I believe that they are waiting for 2023 to get a little bit further along before they initiate that process. A couple of meetings ago, we had talked with you about some infrastructure needs, issues out on Twin Mountain Lakes in that general area where the system is extremely old. The system is undersized. We had had essentially non-stop breaks, the crews have been out there constantly, kind of fighting, fighting the way around the lake there. And so we had talked about the potential to de-obligate the money that has been allocated towards 2024 town and putting that over into infrastructure. And so if, as you look at the budget, that proposed transfer of allocation funds is showing on here. Excuse me. Brandon, is there anything else?
No, that was it. So part of, part of what you'll remember is the reason why we did that is there's, you know, we're wrapping this up, so the way that we're cash flow on this is by the, by the time we get to June of 2026, the monies, i.e. the 330, was going to be that last allocation of monies that we would count for. So part of what we're doing is with this budget, since direction was provided at the ninth or 23rd meeting, I think it was the 23rd, the 23rd of October, I'll say, okay, go ahead and de-oblige that. So this is the federal legal way of accounting for moving that money over there. That doesn't mean that we've got it to spend right now, because as we continue collecting, we are collecting good proceeds from SPOSS. We feel as though that the numbers that were landed on with our estimates are going to be fine. And so that when we do get the chance to get a contractor on board to do, and we did about Twin Mountains as a viable needed project, we can at least have to establish that to move forward. So this was the, the way that the sausage is made when we talk about something and then we follow through and say, this is how you would do it and achieve. This would in effect, because we have been encumbering the monies for the new fire truck that hopefully delivers January, I'm not going to say January 2026, chief. So I'm going to say it.
Into March.
Okay, whatever. It's going to come next year. Lindsay has been covering that money, so that money is going to allow for us to be able to pay for that fire engine debt-free, because ours can be debt-free and be pulled. And so at that point, all of the identified 2020 SPOSS projects in the buckets and the fire station, the fire truck, the police vehicles, the turnout gear, the parks, the different things we will have achieved in the letter of our votes. So we'll move on quickly to enterprise and Lindsay will kind of give her synopsis and kick it back to Kim.
Hi. So in enterprise fund, 95% of our revenue comes from charges for service. This includes your water sewer usage, meter installation, sewer times, water sewer fines, reconnect charges, transfer fees, and damages to meters. We do have cost of construction, which is for new builds, things like that, and it accounts for approximately 4% of our revenue. And 1% comes from our interest. As far as expenditures, 19% of our expenses are for personnel and benefits. We have less employees and water. And we do have some contract labor is. We have less employees and water. And we do have some contract labor is some of our expenses that's about four percent. As you recall, we did contract with Infomark for a water treatment plant, wastewater plant, and that contract like yours roughly twenty percent of our expense. And as Brandon said, these departments as well, there's no capital included this year.
Greatly. Okay, thank you. So Infomark, let's talk about the contract that we entered into last year for contract maintenance and operations of the plants. Um, we have received or been notified that there will be a four percent increase in that contract CPI essentially. Uh, they have been doing a fabulous job. I think that anyone that goes out to the plants, uh, is reflected in both our monthly operating reports that we are required to submit to EPD on both sides. The improvements that they have been able to make at these plants in terms of operations, the fixes, the implementation of things that we just have not had time to be able to do with the limited staff that we had out there are proving to be extremely beneficial for us. Uh, as Lindsay mentioned, there are no capital projects or purchases proposed within water or sewer fund. There is no personnel added. Now you will notice that when you turn the page, Lindsay is proposing a balanced budget. Enterprise funds are not required to be balanced or to have a balanced budget. We show a path towards balanced and that is with a significant use of fund balance from the enterprise side. Roughly six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of fund balance. The one thing that I would point out to you though, is that as you look at the addition, the each one of the divisions or the funds that we have within water and sewer, there is also a corresponding very significant liability of depreciation expense that is noted on each one of those. That is not necessarily something that we are paying out or that we anticipate paying out over the next year. But we are required to book that, that amount because it is a future viability. Plants do not last forever. Buildings do not last forever. There is a lifespan of our systems, of our vehicles, of our equipment. And so depreciation allows us that method of saying, we understand that there will be a point in time where we are looking at having to do replacements, upgrades, things like that. And so when you add the depreciation up across all of them, that is actually higher than the amount of fund balance that we are using to balance the budget.
Bye too.
And then with sanitation.
We'll get Brandon a chance to catch up.
Oops. So again, no new personnel, no capital expenditures provided for any of this. So it, it is our daily operations.
And if I could add in on sanitation, if they recall, a couple of years ago, we implemented a franchise fee on waste disposal, ten percent franchise fee. So fortunately that has, um, broadened our revenue. So usually water has to supplement some to help sanitation. And that has gone down due to that. So through that and just our collection purchases is the worst thing that I have.
Yeah, specifically you'll see what Lindsay's talking about. It's, it's about a, uh, interest of pretty five thousand dollars supplement. Down in terms of the, uh, And so just to kind of further, um, expound a little bit more specifics here. Uh, relative to where some of these things are, are housed. So when you get to the enterprise and can you see what the residue? Uh, you'll see there's not quite many divisions in water sewer, but there are, um, Frank's next, the, uh, sewer maintenance. Um, we've got, I believe, we've got nine employees charged off to this one. However, only two of the nine of the fully charged, the rest we need to split for the, uh, water maintenance. Again, no capital. Uh, this is the wastewater plant. Uh, you'll see we, uh, essentially, um, were able to eliminate a booking of personnel, um, because of the contract. Uh, we had anticipated about a ten percent increase. Um, Kim and I had left this for March and that's what she delivered to was the four percent, uh, increase, which I think is, uh, at least reasonable for what they provided. Uh, water admin. Uh, so again, myself, Lindsay, Lori, Kim, uh, and customers for this. It's our house and this family that we helped to, uh, let's run the business aspect of it. Uh, utility development, we did eliminate the vacant position. So we had not backfilled a position that had been, uh, open, uh, for this year. So we decided to just eliminate that position, uh, albeit I'm not always a proponent of it, but there was no one filling the position. So there's no sense in continuing to book the expense if we've continued to operate for either, albeit, um, we've got to give Kim to train somebody else. So she'll have to do tentative things. Uh, this is the water treatment plant. Again, the Infomark, uh, contract. But this is housed. Uh, we do venue electricity. Uh, we booked the depreciation expenses on this one. This is, again, I believe we've got, um, let's see, eight employees, um, in this particular, uh, budget. Um, half expense out, uh, split with others, uh, just capital with both depreciation. And this is the other half of the, uh, sit maintenance, uh, person. And just to further elaborate, the two people, uh, that are housing this do help tremendously. Uh, the public works team, uh, to help provide them help. Support. Um, this is just the revenue in and out. And then you'll see where the transfer job fund is put, uh, to run our court. That, um, I don't think we made any sort of substantial fee changes, um, other than I think maybe to your, is like alcohol available to, um, business license typically.
Okay.
But, uh,
We, we didn't raise anything or we corrected.
Corrected, yes.
We did raise.
Sorry. So that's Mayor Council. Let's camera Lindsay. I believe they can add is the proposed running place. Um, budget, let's see if you can.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any questions to staff before I open this for public comment? Here now, this time I would ask if there's anyone here at the public that would like to speak on this matter. Yes, sir.
I would like to say just concerning Infomark. I was able to visit the water treatment plant and sewer plant. And I'm telling you, the professionalism, just how courteous they are, the knowledge they bring, even with the anticipation of a four percent increase. There's no way you could ever say that that's not money well spent. They were very impressive.
Thanks, sir. With that comment, I will say you were escorted by city staff. So if anyone's watching, those are some kind of selfies. Talking out together when we visit, so don't just pop up at the plant. You have to be escorted by city staff. So we worked together on that visit. And it was a good visit. Are there any other public comments on this matter?
Will there be opportunities for a different, uh, topic for public comment?
On the work sessions, ma'am, this is a public hearing for our budget cycle. Typically on our council meetings, the regular call council meetings, we always have a public comment period. And so what I advise folks, there's a sign up sheet in the back. And so every regular council meeting.
Yes. Yes, of course. Yes, word.
Any further comments on this? Here and now to staff. I will close the public. Next item on the agenda, consideration of Jifa Clean Water Loan modification request, Ms. Gold.
Thank you. So you'll recall, um, maybe two meetings ago, I had brought to you the request to modify our drinking water loan through Jifa due to the schedule that had originally been provided in that loan showing that construction was going to be done on the drinking water projects in December of twenty twenty-five. Clearly that is not going to happen. And so the modification request did go in along with our letter, with our engineer of records letter explaining for the delays that we are still in design in some cases. And there are some potentially fluctuating circumstances that could change a project scope as well. Um, that is in at Jifa for their review. There is no charge to modify a loan the first or the second time. And so there will be no charge to us. I had mentioned in that meeting that we were going to have the exact same situation for our clean water loans because the approved loan had indicated January of twenty twenty-six for completion and construction. We are considerably further along in those projects. We have one project that has been underway since September. That is the collection system rehab project where they are cleaning and televising, building that repair list and then implementation of repairs. The other project, uh, council approved the award of the contract to UWS. That is the master sewer lift station project, which will eliminate the two very aging, undersized lift stations that we have on Town Creek. So both of those projects are in progress or getting ready to, to start very soon. Tonight I am asking the same question that I asked for the drinking water. If you will, please authorize the, the mayor to execute any and all documents recording that loan modification request. We will get our letter together. GMC is preparing the letter again for the engineer indicating why the schedule has changed. And then we will get that submitted to where we are in compliance with our loan documents then.
Thank you. Counsel, similar request is heard before. I will yield the floor for a motion.
Equal motion. We allow the mayor to, uh, what if, uh, to sign the modified contract for, uh, clean water loan, chief of clean water loan.
Same motion, may I say?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Uh.
Vote for Stan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, recommendation on Jifa Clean Water Treatment Plant Rehab Project, we thought.
Yes. So you'll recall at last meeting, I did not know what to suggest regarding the water treatment plant. And as my good friend Dan Poole mentioned that, I think three times in the article, that I just didn't know. Well, tonight I do know. So, um, I'm delighted to say that I have an answer for you. So as you recall, we did get two bids in that were significantly higher than the amount of money that we had to allocate to the water treatment plant rehab project. Council had authorized our consultant, Kimberly Warren, to work with those two bidders on what does a reduced scope of work look like? How does that result in funding or, or what the bids might then work out to? And is it still a good project that accomplishes the things that we need it to? And that stems from our sanitary survey that EPD does every couple of years where they go in and look at our water plant, uh, at the tanks, at our features within our system. And they give us a very detailed report of all of the things that they would like to see improvements on. Um, I am pleased because Matt was able to get a good scope of work that addresses many of those items that are must haves. We, we have no choice about that. And still give us a route to being within budget. Uh, you will see on the attached bidder sheet, there are three basically routes that we can go. The lump sum items, those are the must haves that we have to do. There are six filters at the water plant. They come in pairs. So we have three pairs. We have one and two, which are from the fifties. We have three and four, which were built in the eighties. And we have five and six, which came in, uh, very early two thousand. So those are our newest. Those are the ones that are on the preferred Leopold system for filtration. The idea was to get one and two and three and four onto that same Leopold system as well. And if the funding was available, go ahead and bring five and six to date two. So the lump sum items allow us to do one and two or three and four plus other work, the turbometers. There is electrical upgrades. There are things, uh, within the clear wells, the concrete work that must be done, things like that. So Matt then said, okay, alternate one, can we add in two more of the filters? So if you're doing one and two with a lump sum, can we add in three and four or vice versa, whatever we have picked? And so those two alternates together bring the total to one million, seven hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-six cents, which brings us within the amount of money that we have to spend on this project. You will notice that I gave you alternate two as well. That would allow for the newest pair of filters already Leopold to also be brought up. So all six filters would then be redone. We talked with the enterprise committee last week about what these options looked like. And when you add in alternate two, that takes us just over the amount of money that we have available to spend. It still brings us within the two million dollars that was originally allocated to this project through the drinking water loan. But it would be two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars that we would need to find from some other source. They asked that we speak with Infomark to see what they thought. And in speaking with Infomark, they like the idea of getting as much in. They are not a hundred percent sold on doing filters five and six because they do work. They are in good condition. But they would like to see if there are other items that we had had to exclude be brought back in. Things like the roof replacement on the plant. Um, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to fix a lot of things and then still have a very poor condition roof on your facility. This would also allow for the gate and the fencing around the water plant to be improved significantly. And that is a very important part of our sanitary survey. Um, they actually called us out on that. So that is something that we would recommend gets added back in as well. Roughly thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars. If you add it all together, Infomark said, hey, with that extra two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, if you can swing that, we see a lot of value in adding some things back that had to be excluded. And so that is our recommendation tonight, um, is to go ahead and award the contract to rehab construction out of Conyers. They come extremely highly recommended. Uh, they are an authorized Leopold installer or whatever you call it. Um, and then actually ask you to approve the alternate number two amount, which is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars, sixty-four cents as a not to exceed amount to where we can bring back in. we can bring back in some of those items that we had not been able to do before. And a recommendation would be to utilize our twenty-twenty-six squash, which has recently been passed. At the time that the water plant, and we discussed this before, we didn't know if squash would pass for the coming year. Now that it has, we would like to try and make this project even better by including that in, and so we are asking for that allocation as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm happy to answer your question.
Any questions of staff?
Infomart had worked with this contractor before also.
I don't believe that Infomart has, Matt and Kimberly Horn has, on some other projects, they come very highly recommended from other sources. The Leopold folks recommend them as well.
Council, any further questions or discussion?
So I do have two recommendations in the body. I know that these are lengthy, so I did want to make sure that you do have recommendation one, which is council to award the reduced scope of work contract for lump sum items and alternate number two, which totals one million, seven-hundred-and-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and sixty-six cents to rehab construction out of Conyers, and two, for council to approve a not-to-exceed amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and sixty-four cents to be funded through twenty-twenty-six squash, so that we may incorporate in more of those must-haves into this project from the sanitary survey.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, recommendations one and two, as presented, you repacked it. I'm going to yield the floor for a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion, whoever said.
Second.
Motion, and a second, any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Both signed?
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Good job. Thank you, ma'am. City manager's office update, Mr. Dobbins?
No update, sir.
Next item on the agenda, I have executive session for legal and personnel, and at this time, yield the floor for a motion to be an executive session.
So moved.
Have a motion, and a second, any discussion, council?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both signed, we will be in executive session. Thank you.
We wish you all for your attendance.